Good evening and welcome to the February 1st meeting of the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. The meeting will be run by the Vice Chairman this evening, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the Vice Chair. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the Vice Chairman to be recognized. Once recognized, unmute your microphone. After speaking, please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed from Zoom. Comment will be limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. The pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item of business this evening will be our consent agenda. The consent agenda is regular business items, routine. They require very little discussion. And that's why we lumped them all together. Okay? With that, do we have any comment from the board here?
Can we lift the minutes?
Minute? You want to?
I was just going to abstain.
You're going to abstain?
Right, you just abstain, we'll just vote. That's what I typically do. I don't abstain for this one.
You have to abstain?
I don't.
You don't? Okay, good. All right. All right, with that, any comment from the audience on consent agenda? I see seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Move for approval. And second.
First by Mr. LaFever, second by Mr.
Is your name Russell?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, but there's obviously no one opposed, so the motion carries three zero. All right. The first item on our action items this evening is our ground lease between the Recreation Authority and the township. And with that, we'll go to Mrs. Schweitzer.
So the ground lease, we currently have a ground lease between the Rec Authority and the township. We have, what's before you denied is an amendment and restating of that same lease, which provides for the more full management and operations and maintenance of the golf course by the Rec Authority. So this document, once signed, will create a bank account for the Rec Authority. The equipment and cash assets will be transferred to the Rec Authority, but the township will retain the buildings and land. This was reviewed by the Recreation Authority at their meeting on the 25th and signed, with the exception of our current version of the Exhibit B, which you got today and is on your table. Exhibit B talks about how we prorate the insurances across the between the township and the Rec Authority. And it was set up that it was very much focused on 2022 and didn't really address future years. The way it's now addressed is it accommodates and provides examples of how that calculation is made. So every year, we'll look at the expenses for the general fund, expenses for the golf budget, create a percentage, and that's how we're going to calculate the coverages for the insurances and separate them, because at this point, the insurance coverages are all under the township's umbrellas.
Okay. With that, any comment from the board?
I think it's a good approach.
Not here. Okay. Yes, the amended and restated ground lease is a much improved document over the one that was in place before. We originally started out with actually three agreements, but we combined them into one, being the one that's being presented tonight. So having any questions from the audience? Go to the audience. Any questions from Zoom? Okay, one question? Yes, sir.
Excuse me, sir, if you could step to the mic.
Stand up, sir.
My name's William Howard. I have a question concerning, you said something about transfer of equipment to the Recreation Board? Is that correct?
Yes.
What authority does the township have to transfer any of their equipment?
Well, township owns the equipment.
That's correct.
So we can.
Township does, and the individuals of the township really own it. And you're trying to transfer. Let me back up just a little bit to give you a little history of. I'm retired from the state of Pennsylvania, from the Pennsylvania State Park system. I've managed all kinds of equipment, all kinds of people, and all kinds of state parks. Never did we have the authority to transfer any equipment to any other agency. And that's why I asked the question. How does the Board of Supervisors have the authority to make that transfer? Where's that writ?
Well, I'll let Mrs. Schweitzer weigh in on this also, but it's my belief that we're transferring the equipment to an authority that the Board of Supervisors created. So while we are transferring the equipment in some way, it's still under township purview, if you will. Now, with that, I'm going to.
And I'm not an attorney. This was reviewed by our attorney for the Rec Authority. We feel it's soundly worded, and like Mr. Bennett explained, it's the Rec Authority is an entity created by the Board of Supervisors. Any action and any documents that are signed or entered into are also signed by the Board of Supervisors. Should the Rec Authority go defunct or no longer exist, everything comes back to the Board of Supervisors or the township.
Does the township then have to go ahead and purchase new to replace what they're transferring over?
There would be no need to purchase new. I'm not quite sure what your question is.
Well, you answered that, but I see where there's good possibility, there is a chance that you would need new. Everything wears out.
And the Rec Authority is the administrator and the overseer of the golf course and will be purchasing equipment throughout the years.
Okay. We'll continue to have indirect control over the equipment, but the Recreation Authority will have the direct authority over the equipment. I think we're okay, and as Mrs. Schweitzer said, we've run this by our attorney and they're good with it, so I don't think we're going to have a problem. Okay, but thank you for your question. Appreciate it. Any other questions on the amended ground lease? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Subway.
Motion by Mr. Russell.
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Okay. Next up is Workman's Compensation Update. And again, I'll go to Mrs. Schweitzer on this.
So we have a physician's panel list in connection with any worker's compensation claim. So when an employee gets injured, they have to seek treatment from somebody on that list. That list was developed in 2011 and really has not received an update since then. We have recently found out that Susquehanna Municipal Insurance Trust maintains a Lancaster County list. We were not aware of that at the time. And what you have before you is Lancaster County's list prepared by Susquehanna Municipal Trust, which we are a member of, and they administer our workers' comp program, so it makes sense that we adopt their panel list. But it takes action of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schweitzer. Any questions from the board on this action?
This seems routine.
Yes, it does. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from Zoom? With that, I'll entertain a motion to begin the use of the Susquehanna Municipal Trust Workers' Compensation Panel List.
No move.
Motion by Mr. LaFever of a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, next item on the action agenda is the Keystone's Custom Homes. This will be an acknowledgement of a zoning text amendment pertaining to the residential building height. Mrs. Schweitzer.
We received this text amendment from Keystone Custom Home. It's in regard to residential building height, specifically for their property, which is known as the Stalford Track at the corner of Stony Battery and Marietta. So they have submitted the petition. If the board so chooses, they acknowledge it tonight, and it gets sent to our Planning Commission, both the county and East Hemphill Township's Planning Commissions, and then back to the board for public discussion.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I was wondering, and I appreciate Mrs. Schweitzer answering Keystone's location where they're concerned about this, and I understand what it is they're asking. I'm just speculating on that track. We might have a maximum of six feet variance in one lot where our ordinance defines it as the foundation and a six-foot perimeter around that foundation. So in effect, we might be raising building heights on that development, maybe three feet. That seems reasonable enough. I think the concern is where we don't have matching heights within reason across the street. And I suspect this would mitigate that somewhat, though it wouldn't necessarily eliminate it, where the where the front of the house foundation is actually lower than the back, which is somewhat unusual usually, but there it would actually lower those roofs. I just want to define what it is we would be approving here before we jump into it, just so that we know how this could affect the township at large.
So tonight, we're just acknowledging the petition. The applicant is not present this evening. It gets reviewed by the Planning Commissions. They will make a presentation to the East Hemphill Planning Commission and then come here to make a presentation to the board.
Okay.
I remember we spent a lot of spent a lot of time talking about that when we redid the zoning ordinance, so I don't know how this would affect that, but I guess we'll find out once the Planning Commission gets a crack at it. So we're just basically acknowledging it, so.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, well, basically just acknowledging it. And it's my understanding, and this isn't really important, but really what's changing here is we're changing the way it's calculated, not so much the height.
The height, right.
The problem is. It's calculated.
That particular development has substantial slope.
Right.
Which causes, with our calculation we have currently in the books, causes a problem.
Okay.
Well, our ordinance defines single-family properties as a maximum 35 feet. Therefore, by my rough analogy, we could have 38 feet as a height of some of the houses, so I just think we need to know exactly what we would be changing.
And they'll have a full presentation for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on this from the audience here in the room? How about on Zoom? Anything on Zoom as far as acknowledging the zoning text amendment?
No.
Hearing nine? I'll call for a motion to acknowledge the zoning text amendment pertaining to residential building heights by Keystone Custom Homes.
No move.
Motion from Mr. Weaver. Second, second from Mr. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, none opposed, four zero. Okay. Moving on to old business, first up tonight is the Church Knoll Recreation Facility. Continued discussions.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I could just jump you back to Item D under action items?
Oh, D. Thank you. Okay, we have a action item here, PennDOT Multi-Modal Transportation Fund Grant Award Authorizing Signatures for the Dairy Road Bridge Resolution 2023-04. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So we were awarded a grant for the, two grants actually, but this one is for the $300,000 for the replacement of the Dairy Road Bridge. This resolution simply authorizes a signature on those grant documents by the chairman and the township manager. It's a 300K grant and the match is 90K, which is already incorporated into our capital programming.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Any questions from the board?
Just that this is a critical bridge and it's on the way in and out.
Yes.
So this has to get done.
Yeah. Well, it looks like we're on the way to getting it done. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from Zoom? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-4 Authorizing Signature by the Chair or Township Manager on Grant Documents Associated with the Dairy Road Bridge Replacement Project. Move. Here, motion from Mr. LaFever.
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, moving on to old business. Church Knoll Recreation Facility. Continued discussions. As everyone knows, we're developing a master plan for the utilization of the what's commonly known as a sod farm on Knoll and Church Street. We're looking for utilization as a continued recreation facility. Right now, it's a sod farm, as I think everyone knows. Tonight, we're going to open it up for continued discussions. Anyone from the board have anything to add or say about the project this evening?
I did have a little bit something here. I was wondering about, there's a stormwater basin at the west end of that piece of land. Is that like a regional basin, or is that just taking care of the sod farm? Does anybody know?
Bliss is taking care of the sod farm.
Just the sod farm?
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work?
No. It held very little water in tropical storm lakes. If you can't hold water from tropical storm lake, it doesn't work.
All right, well, hopefully you don't get too many of them, but.
So that would certainly be a fair game for some things in that area.
Well, yeah, what I was thinking, I knew, I had seen a lot of comments about traffic, I'm assuming on Knoll Road, and also the intersection. So I was wondering if the street to the south could be extended across and make that be the access instead of coming in off of Knoll? I should shift this to work. I don't see a name for that street, but if the access came in through there, I mean, a lot of traffic will be the pickleball courts and the dog park would probably be a lot of daytime traffic. I guess in the ball fields, maybe more on the weekends. So most of your traffic is right here and here. So I was just saying, like, can we just reconfigure this or improve it and just bring the access across? Maybe like that? I don't know, but I would keep, like, wow, we'll keep all the traffic off of Knoll Road, which did seem to be a concern, and it would keep traffic off of this intersection, which doesn't, it sounds like maybe that's problematic there. I don't know if that would improve the intersection situation, but that's really the only thought I had about it.
Okay, well, that's because we're developing a plan. It's one of the things that, you know, I would assume the Park and Rec Group and our township staff and engineers can take a look at. I just would like to point out that there is going to be a significant amount of buffer on Knoll Road. While it won't really impact the traffic, it will, it will create a block, you know, from the residents on the other side of the road. You know, they'll be looking at a slope. And I think it will also, that buffering will also keep things quieter, you know, in the neighborhood. But, yeah, certainly we can look at, you know, creating an entrance on Church. I mean, just looking at the map, I'm thinking pretty close to that Knoll Road entrance. I don't know how that would work with with PennDOT, because that is a PennDOT Road, Church Street. So, like, on the list, and we'll take a look at it. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments from the board?
Seeing a number of athletic-looking people in our audience tonight, I would like to reserve comment till I've heard what they have to say. I believe if they are from the youth association, I'm very anxious to hear what they have to say.
Okay. With that, we'll go to the audience. We'll start on the left, my left, with a comment in the first row. Actually, second row. Go ahead. William, right? William?
Yes.
Okay, have you signed him, William? Okay.
My name's William Howard.
Can I have that pointer? Oh. I just want it back.
Right where I live.
Okay.
Nembah. If I can hold this thing right there. That Signal Hill, Knoll Road. Right on the corner. Actually, that's my camper sitting there. And as I said before, that's 1001 Signal Hill Road Lane, actually. I've lived there for over 18 years. And in that 18 years, Knoll Road has been reconstructed once. And that reconstruction had a road alignment down at Church Road. And that drainage basin that you were saying drives through it? No way. When that reconstruction of Knoll Road took place, it created such a flooding condition in that area that houses, literally their basements filled up, especially across the road from Church Road down where they realigned Knoll. Up at not Stillwell, what's the other one? Up by the church, so between ladder, yeah, ladder back in that area. If you come into the sod farm, that area floods every time it rains. And it's not just a small portion. Even the sod farm has had a problem, and they never get sod out of that section. Probably two to three acres. Ducks and geese love it. I see where they are trying to plant a buffer around on Knoll Roadside and over on Homosa. The thing that they didn't take into consideration, though, there is a major gas line that runs through the south section of that. About once a week, under my porch at my house, I smell gas, natural gas. I've had them come out. They can't detect anything, anyplace. And I'm almost positive it's coming across from that field. The other thing that I've seen happen, if we go at it and park and blacktop or whatever you do, gravel, it's going to increase in the amount of stormwater runoff. And the intermittent streams in those areas can't take it, even in the golf course. It continuously is meandering and washing out banks on them over there. So the area, if you blacktop it, put ball fields in, put any type of surface where the water does not go down through. And what's nice about the sod farm, once a year, that whole place gets ripped up. And they take, they go down 18 inches. And what that does is releases that soil so that it can suck water in like a sponge. The other thing that I believe is going to happen, you put that facility in, and the township does not have any fees to do the upkeep, either as a recommission. The township does not have any additional people to staff that either. And what else will happen? Right now, Knoll Road is a 25 mile an hour road coming down into Church Road, which is 35. Well, let's put it this way. Everybody knows the old chief of police lives right down there at the corner of Signal Hill and Knoll, but I know one year, Trump comes down through, hits the telephone pole so hard, he puts the engine of the vehicle over into that field. Speed limits mean nothing to anybody on that road. And I see we have one of our officers here today. They run their timing devices right up, right from Signal Hill. The average speed on that road is probably over 35.
Okay, we need you to wrap up.
Except for when I'm driving.
Okay.
I'll do 25, and just to tick them off, I'll go slower if I have to. And then I've had people pass me.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have a question I'd like.
All right, the other part.
Sir?
I already went.
Sir? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know the approximate line of that gas line across the site? Can you, can you, yes, but I don't think it's marked on our plan.
It's approximately where the fields break in that approximate area there, right there. Right, right in that area.
Who's hitting that?
Okay. Well, well, Mr. Howard? Well, Mr., Mr. Howard. We thank you for your comments, okay? If you have anything else that you'd like us to consider, if you want to. Send us an email or write, write to us, we're. We'll take additional testimony that way. Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. Have you signed in, sir?
He's going to.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, in the next, in the third row. Anyone?
My name's Chris Landis, 325 Whistler Way, Landisville. Um, I'm the current softball coach for the high school. And I have spent extensive years in the HYA softball program. Um, so I'm here on behalf of speaking in reference to that. Um, I am. Hundred percent behind this, this project. Um, I've. Had it explained to me. I think probably before it became this far. So I'm hundred, hundred percent behind it. Um, what I think a lot of benefits will be is. Space like this is highly sought after in this area for baseball and softball. Every fields like this, a wagon wheel situation like this gets rented out every night and every weekend filled. It is a major income. For a program to have this type of facility in the area. The closest thing to this is out in New York. Um. I want hopefully for softball that there's assurances that. At least three of those fields are softball compatible. Um, because just like baseball, we're struggling to find fields too. Um. As far as. And I do have a construction background as well, so as far as the intersection where it's currently. I would think by moving it, all you're doing is breaking up that space and causing more space issues with. Putting stuff in. Um, and either way, you're still going to have an intersection. Um, as far as this gentleman's concerns, I think. Um. I'm pretty sure these guys are going to plan to have all that stuff taken care of with, whether it comes to speed tables. Um, and things like that. The only concern is there may not be enough baseball softball fields. Uh, the demand is so high. Um, I, I've played, coached all over the country at facilities like this and they are packed. Um, so I think it's a great plan for this township.
Great, thank you very much. And it's my understanding that all four of the fields will be baseball and softball compatible. At the, at this point, okay? Sounds good. What's that? Yes, line comes right through here. Yeah. Yeah. Anyone else in that row?
Yep, hi again, folks. Uh, Joe Hughes, I live at 3343 Nolt Road, right across from the sod farm. Um, I think I spoke last week. And I want to kind of echo what, uh. Chris said there, again, I think I mentioned to you guys last time I was here about, I'd love to see some alternative plans as well. Um, I think this could be. Very big for the township. I'd like, I hopefully the township could take some of. But I don't want to say a little bit more ownership, but ki- kind of really be thoughtful in this, um, and put in fields. Designed for what's best for the township, residents in the township. I'd encourage you guys, if you haven't yet, like you was talking about these. Wagon wheels or wheel and spoke. Or hub and spoke configurations, I'd encourage you to reach out to some of the other townships in PA, Maryland, Virginia. That run, operate these facilities and, and get some feedback from them. Just on dimensions, you know, how much the easeways between them, you're going to need netting for balls flying in and out. There's just. A lot of things that go into that. Like to make sure that the township does it right. So, um, and then one other thing as far as the parking, I know lots of folks talk about the parking. Um, I live on Nolt Road and as the other gentleman mentioned, when you guys redid Nolt Road. Kind of did. Cause issues with, uh, the drainage, sewer. Before you put that curb in there and redid that, you know, you'd see people parked along the road. And I believe before you redid the road, the, the speed was not as bad as it is now. So I'd almost rather see those trees or the easements there, uh, parking. Along the road there, which could alleviate some of the parking concerns people had, so. I, I'd love to see that. Um, I don't know if you could incorporate that in more of an open area. Then you get some of that parking out of what is, uh, um, main, main grass, so. Think.
Okay, well, thank you, appreciate your comments. One of the things that I would say is that, you know, generally we, we recognize overall, there's stormwater issues on this property. As relates to, you know, currently and all those stormwater. Issues will have to be dealt with. Um, when we get into the. Construction stage or the, or the, or the buil- building stage of this, this process. Okay. Well, let's go back to the first row here, go ahead.
I have a whole lot to say. My, my name is John Cox. I, but I came out tonight, 193 North Ridge Drive. I came out tonight because I, I have. Uh, children that participate in the HYA program. And, um. Also have helped with coaching from time to time, so. Uh, I, I, I love Hemfield, I love the school district, I love being here. I look at our music program, I look at a lot of the things we do. It's, it's a great community. Without, I mean, just our current ball fields are abysmal. And, and I, I love what you're trying to do here. I, I hope that you can work it out. I, I would just encourage you. To, to think about how it could, it could be used to really grow this community. I. Kids come in all different sizes and shapes. They have all different kinds of interests. I don't think sports is the only thing that matters. Our music programs are great and theater programs are great and. I, boy, kids that, kids that want to play ball, this is, this would be absolutely fantastic to have, so I just. But you know, I think we can accommodate people's concerns about stormwater and things like that. It's done thoughtfully, otherwise it's a good program.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your comment. Come to us with ideas. I mean, again, we're working on a master plan here. This, this, this will probably change over the next two, three months, you know, uh. So, so we're, we are, believe me when I say we are open to, uh, to changes. On this plan. Thank you. Okay. Second row.
Hi, I'm Patty Clark and I'm at 3337 Cochran Drive. Um, just hearing, um, some of the comments this evening, um, I, I wanted to, um, just. Bring back some of the comments from the last supervisors meeting where there were quite a few township residents that were. I mean, supportive of some type of recreation, but very opposed. I'm very opposed to. Um, I, I mean, I hea- heard an earlier comment about this wonderful recreation area with it being, you know, used. Seven days a week and, uh, my concern is this is right smack in the middle of a residential. Area surrounding the whole thing. While I understand there's an interest in having rec, you know, more recreation in the township. Why not build up an area that's already existing, a very, you know, busy, um, bustling area? Rather than turning a, um, a more quiet area into a large, um, bustling area. Um, I, I would like to see more passive recreation and. Um, natural features added in, uh, to this area rather than paving over, building over. And turning it into a, a major park. Um, I think there were quite a few residents at the last meeting, uh, the last supervisors meeting that also had that opinion, so I hope that that. Opinion is, is going to be, um, heard by the board of supervisors. Um, also in terms of the Hemfield Youth Association, I'm sure it's a wonderful organization. Um, you know, I, I also want you to be aware that it is a, um, a combination of. Multiple townships that make up that group. It's not just East, East Hemfield Township residents, so. Um, you know, while you might listen to their opinions, it's, I think the residents of the township, um, really need to be weighing in the most here. Um, and I, I know last meeting there was a concern expressed about the way the, the youth association approached the. Township initially and kind of got the, uh, ball rolling to have this plan developed. Um, and there's been a lot of concern, um, of them kind of having an inside track. On this without, and them getting the plan first before other township residents received it. So there's just so, there's just so, some concerns about the way all of this has been handled and I think. Number of residents, me included, are very concerned about that. Um, I, I guess I also wonder if any of the township supervisors. Are directly involved in the Hemfield Youth Association and if they are, um, you know, would consider a conflict of interest in terms of your. Voting, um, a certain way on the plan, so.
No supervisors or part of the Hemfield Youth Association.
Or, or your, you know, your relatives, if you have direct relatives involved, so. Okay, all right, well, thank you.
All right, uh, last row on the left. Anyone in that row would like to speak?
Yes, Betsy Bauer. I live at 1113 Old Eagle Road. I'm probably a few of the ones that are opposed to this. I'm concerned about the cost. Uh, I've heard, uh, two to two and a half million dollars to just make this. And then who pays for the upkeep of cutting the grass, taking care of the. Um, the ball fields. Uh, the dog park, um, the pickleball, the tennis courts. And the two-story, uh, press box. The speakers and, um. This is a residential area. Um, I applaud HYA. They've done a fabulous job with training the young kids. But are there other areas in our township? Um, I'm thinking right now at Spooky Nook, there's the. Golf. Um, across the street. I don't know if it's for sale or not, but it would be a perfect place because it's right there at Spooky Nook. Um. But this is a residential area and it sounds like it's going to be a Wrigley's Field. With all that you're planning to have people coming weekends during the day, night, the lights. But I'm really concerned about the cost because I've heard it could go up to three and a half million to put this in. I have no idea. Dave Miller Associates probably have a better idea than I, but. Sounds very expensive to build and to maintain.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the. Last row there on the left? Okay.
Hello, my name is Charles Walker. I live 1369 Schursh. I'm in the forgotten area of the township. This is a, I think a joke. Anyway. I've been involved in sports and baseball and did for fifty years of my life. Every kid that you can get playing some, everything you can get out there is keeping them, teaching them values, keeping them out of trouble. Giving them building confidence, they're refreshing their school, work, refreshing them being a good citizen in this township. As far as, uh. I see one part of this looks like it backs up to the golf course. That is not residential. And that's not a problem area. As far as stormwater, I don't see why stormwater can't be addressed. That's a problem. That's an issue that the state mandated thing. That shouldn't be any problems at all. There should be data to handle. Um. I'm part of the IWA baseball for years. It's driving the state softball. Pickleball, tennis, the other flexible areas. It seems like a great, great idea. I would take it in my area if it was possible. I'd take a rain pack and bring it up against my house, I have no problem. I just think this is fantastic. Something that we can bring out here and. Basically what I would say, it's all about kids, it's all about identity, it's all about.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate your comments. Okay, anyone else on the left side of the room that would like to speak? All right, let's move into the right. Brett?
Good evening, Fred Canar, 109 Clover Circle. Um, been living here about twenty-seven years, retired from the school district. And first thing I want to do is I want to thank all the supervisors and all the staff for what I've seen. Uh, I've been coming to these meetings for. Probably over fifteen years. Sometimes it's eleven o'clock at night and you guys are still making decisions as to what has to be done and what has to be done, right? And I'm the only one of the audience, so I'm hoping to see a lot of these people over the next three, four, five, six years that they're here every meeting. Because that's what some of us do. So I'm hoping they're here to help make some decisions and guide things. Um. And I realize you can't make everybody, everybody happy. Um, Landis Farms, you're going to put in, you're going to take a farm out of my property, out of my neighborhood. And make, my, my kids always walk down to the farm, but you're going to take it away from me. And you were going to build houses. And you know what? You did and it's great. And the community loves it. We walk there. There's a gazebo, a pavilion. We take our dogs up there. Did I want it? No, I didn't want it. It, it was like, it just didn't fit, but it works. Um, State Road, you're going to put what? A hospital there? Why are you putting up? It's a residential area. Why are you putting a hospital next to my house? You know what? I get to hear the helicopters. Are they annoying? How annoying can you be when you know there's a lifeline taking somebody someplace and trying to help them survive? I sit there and I think, you know what? There's bigger problems in the world than me listening to helicopters. It, you know, during the day and during the night. I just kind of live with it. Um, traffic, oh my goodness, when Landis Farms was going to go in, I was like out there. This was working at the school. I was picturing cars coming flaming down Penske, killing kids, crashing into school buses. You know what's happening? Nothing. It's calm. It's cool. People kind of realize, are there speeders? Yes, there's always speeders. Police chief can attest to that. No matter what you do, there's always going to be, uh, 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 speeders wherever you go. But you know what? It's not as bad as I thought. So all these things I worried about, all these things I, I, I thought about. It's nice having a hospital nearby. I'm older, I'm retired. I'm thinking to myself, if something happens to me, I can like walk across and have them take care of me. So I'm going to be here at these meetings. If it takes you three, four, five, six, seven years to finalize this, I'll be here. I'll be listening. I'll be hearing you make decisions. Deciding what the curb height's going to be and what the grading is going to be and what the slope is going to be and what kind of bushes you're going to be picking. Putting in, and how many trees you're going to be putting in. These are all decisions you've been making for decades. And you've done wonderful stuff with the park. You've done wonderful stuff with the community. Do I agree with it upfront? No, a lot of times I don't because I don't understand, but as I get to see you develop a plan and work it through, I'm always impressed. So thank you for what you're doing and, um, I know not everybody's going to be happy, but, uh, it's for the greater good. Um, I know my taxes might go up. I'm retired. But you know what? One day I won't be here and you guys won't be here and somebody will look back and say. Remember those supervisors? They're the guys. They're the ones who put the park. They are the ones who made it happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Next. Sure.
Uh, my name's Eli Cox. I, uh, live at 1048 Sunwood Lane. And just want to thank you all for, for being willing to even have this conversation and to be, be putting the work into this that you are, thank you for that. Uh, my wife and I moved here in 2012. And we have five kids currently, uh, that live in, live in this township and along with my wife and I, obviously. Um, you know, we, when, when we got here, uh, started playing baseball. We've been involved with basketball. I started, uh, helping out with the Hemfield Youth Association, so I. Have been active in that for almost ten years. Um, we have just on the baseball side, a hundred and twenty-five plus volunteers, um, just in coaching on an annual basis. I know softball's got almost the same. Um, and that's not counting the, the basketball that we've had in the past, the boys and girls basketball programs. And, um, I guess what I would say is I, I went to Amos Herd Park. I've been there for, for sixth grade graduations many times. We had our kids playing soccer on those fields. Uh, we've been there, uh, the dream park that's there. Just a lot of neat times over at Amos Herd Park. And I think the, the more opportunities we have for kids in our community to be involved and, and be active and to have places like this where they can. Go and spend time together, but also with their families, the better, the better it is for all of us. I guess I wanted to speak tonight a little bit about the program itself and the nine years. And we've played on basically fields that we have worked hard to try and raise funds. To be able to improve and, and replace the diamond texts and keep the fencing safe. The, the park at Amos Her has always been our, that's sort of been our flagship park. It's our, our ball field. It's a fourteen U. It's our fourteen U section one field and it's beautiful. East Hempfield's done a fantastic job of, of maintaining that and working with us. A lot of times we, we buy the, the materials and the equipment for you all to maintain. It's been wonderful and we really appreciated that. This park in particular, you know, I've driven by this for years before I, before I took a role on the, the youth, the travel baseball coordinator for H Y A. I used to drive by this field for years and just sort of dream about baseball fields there. I never understood why it was sitting there vacant. And I look at this picture here and, and you know, we first started talking about ideas three years ago. On building possibly a field or two fields together somewhere so that our kids, when they're done playing. They could go over and watch another group of kids play. We, we go to some of these programs around the county. And one of the neatest things you see is when, when a team finishes a game and they come over and they cheer on their, their teammates in the community. When they finish practice, they come over and cheer on their teammates. And so this idea here looks, it looks really grand. But I also look at it and I see a lot of green space. I see a lot of trees. I see walking, walking paths. I see opportunities for, for people all across the community here. And I guess this gets me excited because I spent a lot of time driving by that turf field and just wondering what it was. And then I, I got involved with, with Hempfield and, and started being like, man, we should put ballparks there. And I never really dreamt of this, to be honest. This is like well beyond where I would have ever hoped. But I think. Mr. Canar said earlier about, you know, fifty years from now. I think you look back at this fifty years from now and people go, man, I can't picture this community without it. And, and I really think that that to me is something that would be a really neat legacy for the community. I think that it is really important to consider all the people around it and their concerns. And I hear you all doing that. I really appreciate you opening this up. I'm sure you get a lot of feedback. This isn't, for me, it's not just about my kids. And it's not just about the kids in our program. It's really baseball and softball have needed fields for a long time. But this is bigger than that. I think this is really a neat plan for the whole community. I also work at L M S now at the middle school. And I just see so many things that we can do in the community with the kids with, with an opportunity like this.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Next in that row.
Hi, Jesse Perica, three zero zero four Woodridge Drive. I've been fortunate enough to be a resident of this township for almost my life. I've also been fortunate enough to participate in youth sports since I was probably eleven or twelve years old. That was thirty years ago when I started and I know for, for all the baseball players in, in Hempfield. For the Youth Association, I know that in those thirty years that not one, that not one kid has ever played a home game with dugouts. Or with lights. And I don't know about softball, but have any, I mean, have any of your kids ever played with dugouts or lights at a home game? That's something that as we would travel to other local. To play against other local teams, the majority of them were kind of more in like the small town USA areas, but they would have that. And those, the memories that were created in those environments were priceless. We still talk about them. So to have, to even to think about that opportunity and like, like Eli said, to have. Older kids coming over to watch the younger kids or the younger kids being able to go and watch the, the older kids. I mean, that builds, in my opinion, that builds community. It definitely builds sport. And I think there's tremendous value. I mean, this gentleman right here said there's, there's tremendous value in. In, in kids staying local. I love it that it's right in the mid, personally. I mean, and everybody has their personal opinion. I love it that it's right in the middle of East Hempfield Township. It's great that we don't have to drive over to Mannheim to, across the street from the nook to play. Somewhere it's, it's, in my opinion, it's a beautiful thing. So obviously I'm all for it. One question for you guys. If this drawing, I think you, you mentioned, Mr. Bennett, that you'll get updates. Will those be, will those be emailed out to, to the resident, to the township?
Any, any changes that we make will go out to the township and to, to its residents and it'll be communicated to everybody.
Cool.
Yes.
Awesome.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Kevin Kirchhoff. I'm at two eight four four Missioner Drive. First, I did not grow up in the Hempfield community. I just moved here recently about three years ago. I grew up in Mannheim Township. I work for Mannheim Township Public Works. And on a daily basis, I'm involved with a facility not quite like this, but very close. A dog park, a small dog park, walking trails. A playground and baseball fields. And I never really thought that it would get used as much as it did until. I started the work for the Public Works Department. And you see how much the dog park gets used. And how much it brings community members together and how much. There's a sense of pride amongst the community that they look out for one another and they pay attention to one another's children. Wives, husbands, and so on and so forth. This is just not a baseball facility, right? It is a community facility. You think for the homeowners that are close to there, that maybe the Parks and Rec has an egg hunt at Easter time on one of the fields. And you can very easily walk over there and participate in that. It's meant to be used by everyone. It's not just an H Y A thing. It's not just a baseball thing. Who knows? Maybe the next plan might have a skate park, possibly, right? The, the possibilities are endless. Pickleball is its own entity and will just continue to grow. But this is not just a. Fertile ground for just baseball and softball is meant for the community. So with that. I live off of Knoll on Missioner. It's right down the street. I actually wished I lived a little closer so I wouldn't have to drive there. But I thank you guys for your time. Thank everyone for coming tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Next row.
Good evening. Craig Dunleavy, thirty-four sixty-five Knoll Road. So I'm in the unique position where I have a six-year-old son that's in the H Y A baseball organization. But I also live, if you look at the map, directly next to the farm, near the corner of Knoll Church. So I'll talk about a couple of things. Mr. Perica talked about our memories as kids in the township. He's absolutely right. Some of our best memories playing are at Kunkel Field, are at Fields in Mannheim Township where it's under the lights. You feel like a big league player. Today, Mr. Perica's kids, a few other people that are here tonight, all have kids at the same age. My dream is for my kid and their kids to have the memories that we have, but have them on their own turf. About the plan itself and the location, there's a lot of talk about stormwater management. Having done some improvements at my house, I'm confident that the township is aware of stormwater management and what needs to be done. So I have all the confidence in the township to, to be able to manage the stormwater management and make sure there, there aren't water issues. Secondly, traffic on Knoll Road. There's no doubt people speed on Knoll Road today. It's not outsiders. I'm often driving down Knoll Road going twenty foot between twenty-five and thirty miles an hour and there's somebody riding me. And they turn into the neighborhood across the street from the proposed location. So it's not all outsiders that are speeding. It's everybody. My hope and desire with the traffic situation, more cars, it limits the amount of speed people are able to build up. Also, I, I think it's a reasonable expectation or hope that there would be speed tables. Because speeding is an issue, but with some speeding tables and. Quite honestly, additional traffic, it's gonna naturally slow traffic down. And again, my location compared to the, my dream is for the kids of the H Y A organization. The kids of our community, whether it's baseball, softball, there's plenty of space for soccer, there's tennis, whatever it is. My hope is that the, the community benefits and I'm confident they will. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in that row? Yes, yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Charlie Enoch. Retired, very familiar with stormwater management. I'm here on behalf of the H Y A just to talk a little bit about this. I was involved with the H Y A thirty years ago. I'm still involved a little bit today when I'm helping these guys. I think this is a sense of community more than it is a sense of ball fields. I look in this room right now and the way you build community is give kids an opportunity to play. Give them an opportunity to play in an environment that's safe, that people enjoy going to. And I believe in the community, I coached four of these guys that are sitting over here now. For me to look over and see them participate as coaches and participate at the township level is quite amazing. And I think that's the kind of character you build with sports and it doesn't have to be baseball. The gentleman alluded to that earlier. It could be soccer, pickleball, anything. As far as the stormwater management issues, all that can be worked out. In fact, you could probably improve that by virtue of how that park is built. I attended multiple meetings on Church Street with two of the township managers about those same concerns twenty years ago. So I totally endorse what you're doing. I applaud you for having the vision to look into the future and try to get this accomplished. I know there's concerns with other citizens, but I do think all this can be resolved. So good luck and I'm fully supportive of your efforts.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment?
I have not received any requests to comment on Zoom.
Okay. So we'll go back to the board of supervisors one more time. Mr. LaFever?
Yeah, I'll cash in my, my chip now as it were. My responsibility sitting here is to listen. And I was listening tonight again. And I would identify every comment made as given. Given that residents living close by, in some cases, have concerns. Don't think the project is going to fit into their neighborhood as they've known it. And I've heard all the very positive things about youth and the benefits of the youth programs and what they do. What I was hoping to hear and what this project needs to hear very soon if it's going to proceed. Is how those that want to do it and believe it is so positive intend to pay for it. Or to organize. A group that collectively can pay for it. I heard a two and a half million dollar estimate. Our engineer estimates this project just short of seven million dollars as you see it. Plus engineering and development costing. That's today. We all know what's happening today in our economy. I said last, two weeks ago, and I will say it again, this is a wonderful project. This is an asset. You stand corrected. It's not in the middle of the township. It's in a corner of the township, but that doesn't matter. It's very well located for what it would be intended to do. But it must represent all of the residents of East Hempfield Township, many of whom would never use this or have an opportunity. So yes, to them, it's still a nice asset in a wonderful township and there's a benefit to that. But my concern sitting on this board is how we're going to pay for this. And if we get started piecemealing, how it is done in a master plan, appropriate manner. That work doesn't get torn out to make another phase later. It's all thought through and it's done a hundred and one percent. That's my responsibility. That's where I am with this project.
Well, I'll, yeah, Mr. LaFever kind of stole my thunder. So, because I'd kind of brought this up in the last meeting. I think from my sense of perspective. We just completed building out Ayr Park, something that took about twenty-five years to do. And everybody's talking about this when they look at this concept as present. This is, this is a plan that is gonna take. Years to build. When we met with H Y A in October, it was, we were just providing some land. We're gonna get some ball fields up. And that was, and what we gotta do in a smart way. And the township really doesn't have money for the project right now, but we get the land going and we'll get it started. And I think that's the way it needs to be looked at in terms of the passive recreation. By default, it's gonna be passive recreation for years. Because there's only gonna be a few things that can go up at a time. At our last meeting, I deliberately asked our manager to go over our, our capital improvement plan that we have for the township. And we have a capital reserve fund. And over the years, we've been very judicious in how we do projects. We said no to a lot of projects. We prioritize the work in the township. We did open it up more to business. Would you seen the development that's occurred? We've benefited from that because that's kept our taxes down because we had all this developer money that's come into the township. As well as funding our park and recs. Some of our park rec projects have come from developer money too. But we've been very. Very pragmatic in how we approach things and, and trying to make sure that we can pay all of our bills as we do and be very responsible. So I give it your own house. And so I would kind of look at taxpayer dollars. It's your money. And we're, we're here to represent you and make sure that we're getting you the best bang for the buck. And so with that in mind, when we did Ayr Park, it was a twenty-five year process. And that's, this is what this represents. This is a long process. There's gonna be a lot of passive at first and probably ten years down the road. Other than maybe having a couple of ball fields, say it's gonna be looking totally different by that point. Because every time the plan changes and then the change in park here and Ayr Park changed over time too. And what we have now is not at all what was originally envisioned at first when Amos Her sold the property and basically donated to township. So I just wanted to kind of put that caveat in there because when you look at our long-term plan, we just took on. The state road interchange, which I think everybody would agree, that's something that benefits everybody in the community. Had to be done. Very dangerous interchange. We're now doing Centerville. Centerville is costing the township in excess of about four and a half million dollars. We have a couple of other public safety projects. We have some floodwater projects. We have some M S four stormwater projects as I look at my, my, my stormwater. Gurus at the front row there. So we, we have all these things going. We have all these competing needs. And this is important. The community stuff is important. But there also is opportunities. And when, when Mr. LaFever was on the board at the same time. I was when we had our last round when we were looking at the dream park and we couldn't figure out how we were gonna get over the hump. I don't know how many of you were involved in the community build for that. But as Mr. LaFever's talking about getting people involved, that's one of the best ways to build a park. The most successful parks that have actually been built have been built in a community build format. It's very friendly for the taxpaying dollars. And given the fact that we only gonna have about a million capital reserve and we're looking at a project, as Mr. LaFever just said, in excess of seven million. And it'll just go up from there. We don't have the money to do it the traditional way. Of course, we can go and we can do the big tax increase. Of course, we can go and we can do the big tax increases, but I'm sure that's not going to be too popular with a lot of people. So how can you creatively do that? So as I'm, I'm, I'm a former Penn legacy coach. I've coached soccer for years. My son had played with H Y A baseball. And we, I just want us to be, just take a step back and do things right. Let's kind of lay this up. How can we do this as a community in a way that addresses that we have a very limited budget? But we want to move things forward. Can we maybe do some things in the community build format? I know H Y A has a great organization. I've helped with the fundraising part of it, so I know. But I know that's a, that's a tall order to say, just on one, it'd have to be a whole community involvement. Uh, but that's, that's one of the tools in the tool basket. There's grants out there, but the grants again, so say this is. A seven million dollar project. The grants that are out there right now have require about fifty percent match. So that would, even in a perfect world, if the township got grant money for every thing that's on this, that's three and a half million dollars, we'd still have to come up with. We're still about three million short realistically. Uh, so while grants can be used. In the community build format, they're just one of the tools in the toolbox. We do have some developer funds that was dedicated for new park and recreation facilities that would be available for. Park projects, but again, that's a limited dollars tip. So I think I just want to set the expectations as we're kind of looking at this. That there's, this is a process that's going to go through. It was just started with a discussion in October during our budget hearing. Uh, that, you know, there was a need and why can't we use this field? And that was what was offered originally. But I just want to make sure we set expectations. This is not something we're building in two years. We're not putting this all to the ground in two years, just like we didn't build Ayr Park in two years. It's going to, it'll take a, a while and it'll take the community to do that. And there'll be a lot of new ideas that'll come out in the future that we're not even thinking about right now. So I think part of the passive recreation, a good part of this is going to stay passive for a while. Just from a practical perspective as we kind of look at, and that's kind of the way I would like it because. We put the master plan together, but we know it's going to change. Um, so. I'm supportive of this in general, but my concerns are the funding part of it. And that has been my concerns from day one is how do we fund something like that? Because we do have so many competing interests. And first and foremost, as a township, when William Penn created township system. In his great infinite wisdom, he had two charters for the township. It was provide for public transportation and provide for public safety. And those are the two things we have to do first in the township, as our roads, fire, police. And fire and police are going to be, uh, especially fire are going to get more expensive as the years go on right now. Then we have these other things like park and recreation, other things the community wants. So we have to balance all those needs as we go about this. So I just ask for patience and I just have, just caution that this is a process that we're doing. It's not, it's not. It's going to be a long process at this point. And the goal right now is maybe to get some immediate things going for the fields that have been discussed. But then recognize that the rest of it is going to be more of a discussion item. That's my individual perspective, so.
And I don't have a whole lot to add to that, uh, just a couple kind of scattered thoughts, but I do, I understand that. Transportation roads and police and fires are primary directive. And parks come somewhat second or they come next in line. I'm not sure. I think there's a rule of thumb as to. How much space to devote to parkland based on population. So I'd kind of be interested in seeing how we stack up against, say, Mannheim Township or. Not that we're in competition, but I think there's kind of a. Loose rule of so many percentage of parkland based on your population, which does continue to grow. And so there may need, it sounds like there's definitely a need for, for certainly baseball fields and other. Uses of this type. One example of self-funded project is the dog park. We do have, um. A small group that's interested in kind of taking that on by them, you know. Taking that on themselves to, to organize that and they basically just need a place to put it. So that's not a lot of work involved in that, but. There is some interest in, uh, self-revived projects like that. I think in the short term or medium term, it's probably going to stay mostly a turf farm. Like it. You know, natural passive recreation, basically what it is now, I think. You know, assuming this goes forward, it is going to be piecemeal. And it's probably going to look a lot the same in maybe five or 10 years as it does now, I think. So, but I'm, we might still have that as partly turf farm. So that's all I got.
I got one other thing real quick, Mr. Bennet. The other thing too is having gone to many baseball fields over the years, not all of them are created the same. And that the thing I would challenge as we kind of lay this out is looking at. Not only the initial cost, but looking at the long-term replacement costs and maintenance costs. There's too many baseball fields. Around the county that we've gone to, they're basically run down because they are paid for by a grant. And then when it came to do the replacement, the money wasn't there and they basically put in facilities that they could not maintain in the future. So as we kind of lay this out, we really need to be smart with the things we put in here. If we do use any grant monies in here, they need to be. We still have to be cognizant of what it's going to cost for our future generation to replace it. We don't want an eyesore twenty years after we're all gone. Uh, that was paid for by a lot of grant monies and there's not the money in the community now that replaces. So you just need to be cognizant that that's something I really observed going as not, some of the fields are really nice and some of the fields are pretty hard crappy. Um, and you can, and so, I mean, that's. But I think we want to make sure that what we build to is sustainable long-term, uh, for the future generation to.
Sure, go ahead.
Importance of having a very secure master plan before we proceed with something like this. Given that there's a consensus that it can only happen if it happens in portions and pieces as it can be funded. The one thing that must be done initially is to regrade this whole site. And that will take care of the stormwater depression that exists that we've heard about, that people know about. Those kind of things need to be done on a project like this and what other, other stormwater features. They have to be developed before you can start building up out of the ground. So there's not a concern in my opinion about stormwater for this site. It just is one of the initial factors that has to be dealt with properly.
Okay. With that, I'll make, uh, I'll make a couple of comments, uh, while, um. I agree with a lot of what's been said here, uh, in terms of, um. The project, um, I think that it is important that this project. Bring the community together and that it's something that the entire community can work towards. As Mr. Wigglesworth said at our last meeting. This property belongs to every township resident. Not just the ones that live across the road, not the ones, not only the ones that live down the street. Belongs to every resident in the township. It's my belief that we are looking at a project that's going to take years. Um, hopefully it won't take twenty-five years, but, uh. It's going to take more than one year on, on the project. As far as the money is concerned. I believe H Y A is putting together a plan to, to address this situation, the, the money side of this. No one is called, no one is going to increase your taxes to build baseball fields. So I think, uh, increasing taxes is off, off the table, I think for just all four of us who sit up here. I'm only speaking for myself. And finally, um, a three and a half million dollar price tag, and I'm not sure that's what it is. But let's just say it's a three and a half million dollar, uh, price tag. Uh, over a five-year period, uh, I believe in that, that the township. Can find some financial resources to support that, that project, given everything else that we're doing. I, I believe we can find the resources to do that. That's not that much money over a four, five or 10-year period. If you, if you will. So I think we have an, I think hopefully there will be, um, more time to discuss this project. Uh, and, and move it along, uh. I think, uh, with some, you know, we'll take everyone's comments, uh, all the board comments on this, put them together. We'll continue to have discussions about the project and, uh, you know, we'll go from there. Um, but again. We do need to start somewhere and that's with a good master plan. Uh, and that's what we're, that's what we're working towards now and, and from there. We'll figure out a way to, to, to finance the project or. At a very minimum, a large portion of the, of the, uh, project initially. Okay? Anything more from the board? I'm all right. Okay. All right, sounds good. With that, we'll end that portion of our, uh. Old business and move on to M S four quarterly update from D M A.
So we, we get a quarterly report from D M A because they administer our M S four, uh, program. This is for the first quarter. They simply outlined that some work being done on Pennington Drive, that basin, uh, off of McFarland. And we actually do have a property owners meeting scheduled for February twenty-first at six P M. Uh, uh, let's see, Ayr Wetlands restoration work. That is being done to the far east of the Ayr property. When that basin is completed, there will be a trail around that, if everyone's aware of that. Also, the Nissley Road Basin, um, again, will be a. A project that will hopefully slow down the water going, getting to Church Street and those properties across the way. As well as the erosion that's happening on the golf course. They did submit an S R B C grant, Siskiyou River Basin Grant. For the Four Seasons and the Hempfield Rec Center's Restoration Project, which we've talked about in prior meetings. And they are working on the M C M plans one through six. Which has to do with our permitting process. So there, there's, um. Criteria and standards that they have to meet to satisfy D E P and E P A. And they're, they're managing that for us. There, uh, with the spring just around the corner, hopefully, they're going to be starting their wet weather, uh, outfall discharge. Uh, projects, uh, looking at the outfalls that we do have with those all have all been mapped. And now they're going through them section by section in the township to make sure that all of those basins function properly. And that's pretty much all they have.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge the review and receipt of the M S four quarterly update from D M A.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Russell and a second from Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Next on the agenda is our two thousand twenty-three board goals. Continue discussion. We have, uh, any discussion here from the, from the board?
I'll kick it off. Uh, I am quite in line and all right with the goals for. The stormwater and the park and rec committees, which I am responsible. Um, through this review and. The M S four quarterly report, and I'm glad that we have the meeting scheduled for the twenty-first. I believe that's primarily to deal with our McFarland area.
Correct.
We may need another meeting to bone up a bit on the goals as stated in our, uh, stormwater area. So that, that's my position on, on my responsibility. I also, as an aside, have responsibility and I'll take the moment. Uh, serving on the traffic committee. I suspect what we are doing in our traffic committee meetings monthly. Is actually conducting sort of a committee meeting. In that we review situations in the township as they exist. Ones that are brought to us as problems and asking for our analysis and, and action. And it may be that we could facilitate that work if we had a separate traffic commission committee. That would look at the ongoing matters. Uh, right now on our, on our docket would be, of course, the completion of the truck study. We have the matter of how to. Discourage speeding and we've had some good thought in the committee. This is one of the things that prompted my thinking when. A month ago, Mr. Weaver suggested that a rolling hump is more acceptable and does the job. As opposed to a bump that jars one's teeth, as it were. And, uh, things like this are, are how we can collectively, uh, do our job up here. So that's a thought I have for consideration that we would have something on the order of a traffic commission committee. To, uh, to look at that. And that's all I have.
Mr. Weaver, since you're the other member of the traffic committee here tonight, and any thoughts on that?
I wouldn't be opposed to it. I, I mean, the traffic commission meets once a month now. Which is probably at least as much, if not more often than a. A two-person committee would meet. So I would not. I wouldn't necessarily expect that we would get more meetings, um, but it might, I wouldn't, you know, I'd be okay with that.
It, it might be problematic because of the sunshine law. The traffic commission is comprised of three members, so majority would be two. So you'd be meeting by yourself.
That would be a two-person.
No, you couldn't, but Miss Switzer's saying it's like a three-person board, the two of you can't beat privately.
Right.
Because of sunshine law.
I guess we advertised it, we could do it.
Correct. You could have another traffic commission meeting besides the monthly meeting you already have.
Then you'd have all three of you.
We could come a little better prepared for our constituents if we were addressing these things and maybe have an, an open. Portal for them to bring it, which they're doing in our commission meetings. I guess in candor, I would say sometimes we stutter in the traffic commission. And I, I'd like to maybe improve on that if we can, so.
Maybe Mr. LaFever, maybe you make a workshop session for the three traffic commission members.
I thought you were talking about a two-person group, which really can't make any decisions by themselves, but.
About a quarterly workshop, maybe?
Three-person workshop then, sure.
It's up to the board.
I'd say we think about it. You know, I don't think we need a decision this evening. It's just a thought that came to me. As I was getting out of the box, as I tend to do and, um.
You, you could.
Maybe it has some merit.
Make a second meeting. On, on the first Wednesday at six, but. Something to think about.
So why don't we take that thought and make that old business that we would consider at, at our next meeting when Mr. Wigglesworth is here?
Thank you.
Get his input. That would be my suggestion tonight. Anything more on board goals?
I'm good with the M S A right now at this point.
Okay.
All right, it'd be good to wait until Mr. Wigglesworth gets back to the vote on.
Agreed. Let's table him for tonight and, and, uh, we'll wait for Scott to get back and, uh, and he can weigh in. So, uh, do we need a motion to table?
No.
No, okay. All right, with that, any new business tonight? Hearing none, let's move on to public comment. Uh, this is an open public comment. Subject to the same rules. Do we have anyone here for public comment this evening? Seeing no one, how about on, how about on Zoom?
No, sir.
No, okay. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the, um, manager's report.
So not a whole lot going on in terms of traffic and projects, uh, over the winter time, other than, um. Old Worristown Road Bridge is still struggling with the utility issues. And last, but the last sewer line is progressing and the first COVID has in place, so that's good news. The, uh, Route seventy-two Lititz Road project. Uh, we're still waiting for Pandot to issue our permit. They are insisting that Crowder Lane be closed at this point, so we're still negotiating and trying to. They are insisting that Crider Lane be closed at this point. So we're still negotiating and trying to change their mind.
Is that one where we gotta get some help at this point?
Uh, I, I don't think that's going to help. But that might be where we're at, yes. Yeah. Stony Battery Trail, again, kind of stopped. Other than the fact that we did have, I did have a conversation with West Hemfield Township regarding a sketch that was proposed for the shortcut between Stony Battery and Kaufman. There was discussion about closing it, making it a one-way south. Uh, but that impacts property in West Hemfield Township. So we still have to make some discussions yet with, uh, West Hemfield. McFarland Drive, we mentioned that there's a meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-first at six PM to talk to the property owners about the back, their backyards, which is Wetlands Flipping. We talked about the workers' comp, new panel, board goals. We did have two group meetings. The public safety did meet. There was a list of things from the police department. Our compassion dog, companion dog has arrived. His name is Valor. The license readers, we have purchased four, I believe. And they've arrived. They're waiting for installation. There was also some discussion regarding the intersections of South Colebrook and Landisville, as well as Junction in Landisville. And, uh, Chief Brubaker made some extensive, uh, research along with Sergeant Lombardo and brought this to the committee and we discussed it. And what we have proposed to do is add some road signage, some pavement signage on South Colebrook. And to improve the visibility of the stop signs on both intersections. So the painting on the roads will have, will have to wait till spring, but you should see some improvements out there in terms of the signage and the, the beacons on the stop signs. Steph also discussed with the group, the, uh, future and future needs of the police department and the fire departments. That discussion then went into a long-range planning for both agencies. Incorporating that into our comprehensive plan, which we intend to update from less was done twenty twenty-six, twenty sixteen. So the future of the police department and fire departments will be incorporated into that, that study as we move through the year. We also discussed the trail crossing or potential trail crossing on South Colebrook, which is the, uh, not just blank, what is the name of that trail?
Junction Trail.
Thank you. That was too obvious. The junction trail, that it does cross South Colebrook. It's, it's relatively open, but the speed on that area is, is fast and we're looking at putting in a potential trail crossing, but that's going to take coordination with Raffo Township and the county. So we're working on that as well. The fire department, uh, Chief Kotmeyer discussed the MOU regarding the Worristown duty vehicle for the, uh, deputy chief. And he also advised the group that the, uh, ISO rating, which is the insurance rating for municipalities, they, he had a review. He feels very confident that that score will be very good. That score reflects on how residents can purchase, purchase fire insurance. So it has an impact on, on residents as well. The, uh, public safety group met and preliminarily reviewed the findings of the truck traffic study. There's nothing written. We just reviewed maps and data. Uh, we also need to have discussions with West Hemfield Township regarding this because some of that study did flow over into Broad Street and, and how we're going to handle that. We also reviewed the DMA print regarding the shortcut between, uh, Stony and Kaufman. And as I mentioned before, Penn, uh, Manheim Township also reached out to us about, uh, reassigning the Old Worristown Road Bridge was under construction from Manheim to East Hemfield Township. That's going to take further discussion between the managers and public works. But essentially, um, they're looking for us to allow them to thou, give, like give the bridge to us, but we would be responsible for inspections, which has an impact on the township. So that's something you'll be seeing further, uh, information down the road. And that's it unless there's questions.
Question on, uh, Crider Road. What exactly is the plan on hold based on closing the road?
Pandot won't issue a, a permit, HOP permit for the temporary signals at that intersection unless Crider Road is closed because of the, um, the stacking that was going, that will occur on seventy-two. They won't be able to exit Crider Lane.
Do we have something in writing from them on that?
No, we have conversations at this point. I'm sorry.
You mean from Pandot or?
From Pandot, no.
I think yours is a comment, I think.
There's comments, yes.
Writing, that's in writing, yeah. If there's a comment.
I don't know that we actually have that yet. They were hoping to get resolved before a comment was issued. Well, I'm sorry, there is, yes, there is. I'm sorry. There is.
There should be a comment from, I thought they did a comment later, so it should have been a comment.
Yes, there is.
And that's just for the record, that's a, it's, it's called Crider Lane, but it's actually driveway for B R Crider.
And the businesses.
And the issue is that the trucks, that's the only way the trucks can get in and out of the site. It's not like we close it off and they can just go down Littit's Road and turn in there. The trucks can't navigate around to get there. So it's a major issue for the contractor to have that gate closed. And that's a stumbling block right now. So.
Well, I guess with a wide enough apron on Littit's, they could do it, but it's, it is a handicap.
Well, it's more of their building. It's the site, this, it's site limitations of getting equipment around the building to get to that driveway versus coming out that way. That's, that's.
Yeah, it interferes with their scales, which are there.
It's not out, it's a road, it's on the camp.
I mean, a- again, anything can be done. It's just going to cost a lot of money to reconfigure a parking lot. So it's a lot, it's a lot more complex than just saying just close the driveway. They go a different way.
Right.
Complicated problem. Concerned that it's going to maybe slow things down or
It has slowed things down.
Or stall it. Don't think we can afford to have it stalled. Having said that, good luck with your negotiations. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Switzer. Okay. Looks like we're down to the last item on the agenda, which is the adjournment. Do we have any other thing to discuss here this evening? Okay, for the good of the cause, having said that, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-seven.
The gentleman said, this is his camper. And you're saying.